Okay, so let's um. Get started and hopefully we hear back from Samantha one way or the other. Um Jerry, you are our liaison from the city council, right? Welcome, it's great to have you here.
Glad I could make it.
Do, were you um told at all what our work session was about?
Concern with the spark.
Yeah, um so our commission wanted to have a work session to draft a statement. Um it's unclear at the moment whether it'll be a statement coming from the entire housing commission or just individual members of. Uh but I was asked to bring a draft that we could then look at and edit. Um and then kind of go from there to see whether or not it is um. Delivered as a whole or or by individuals, basically. Um so we are planning on providing this comment at the uh next city council meeting, which is the eighteenth? Yeah, the eighteenth.
Okay.
Yep. Um so I'm gonna share my screen. And then Megan and Randy, I'm gonna have you all kind of read through this. This draft, I I timed it earlier and it is six and a half minutes, public comment is five. So um. If I am to read all of it, we need to edit it down. Um if multiple people want to participate. Um and like promised to show up, then we could read like two people and split it over the course of two different people. So that's an option. So the first part is an introduction and then I've got bullet points um that can be reorganized um in a different order if needed and then I figured numbered. So could I just read the opening paragraph and get some feedback for that?
Sure.
Okay, uh so greetings, good evening, I'm Reverend Casey Banks, Chair of the Affordable Housing Commission. Might need to change this, speaking to you on behalf of the commission regarding the grant given to Spark Newburgh. We'll change that if needed. Previously, the Affordable Housing Commission reviewed the grant applications. And determined that the Spark Newburgh project did not yet meet the eligibility requirements. Our commission assumed that the city council would agree that a project that did not meet the minimum threshold criteria would not receive funds. We were surprised to learn that the city council made the award anyway. We know that multiple community members have already spoken against that decision. As an advisory board, we have chosen to offer additional comment tonight with a request that the city council rescind its award for Spark Newburgh. And open up another NOFA round which Spark could reapply for. Here are our reasons for this request. Feedback.
Yeah, so far so good.
Not to piss people off in the first paragraph, but yeah, that could happen.
Yeah, but I mean, you're saying exactly what we've discussed in that. Yes, that we had all agreed that we would like the city council to rescind its award for Spark. Um and I think you're outlining it well, it's you setting it up.
With the screen share, I can't see the chat room, did um. Was there anything in the chat from? Oh, gosh.
I don't see anything in the chat.
Okay.
In addition to what Randy has always already.
Randy, sorry, I was having a a name flub there, I was like, it's not Larry, Randy, thank you. Okay, so let me know if if Randy puts anything in the chat, can we get it?
And Samantha joined us.
Uh Samantha just joined us.
Great, okay. Um is she?
I am here.
Hi Samantha, um can you see my shared screen?
Hello Samantha.
You can see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, um so now that we have a quorum, um we can decide whether or not we are. Um doing this statement as a whole statement from the Affordable Housing Commission or if we are. Putting individual names to it and saying we're members of the Affordable Housing Commission. Um so we're just kind of going through this uh draft paragraph at a time. Um this currently is a six and a half minute thing. Um it needs to either be cut down to five minutes worth or uh two people can come and we could do the letter together over. Um the course of two public comment windows, so. Um so I'm gonna leave that first paragraph up there for you to skim if you want. And then the first bullet point, uh public funds are limited, grants are competitive, and in the world of affordable housing efforts, we all have our pet projects. Therefore, we need clear transparent standards for all applicants and deliberators. We had that clear transparent standard in the scoring rubric. Which the city council previously approved and asked the commission to use. We believe the city council aired. Did I spell that wrong? It should it be no O R? Is that how you, is that how it should be? City Council aired? Who are my grammar folks?
That's a good question, I do not know. I think that is, I think he, I think you've done it, right? I'll I'll look it up.
Okay.
According to Google.
Okay, aired and ignoring that rubric when it came time for their deliberations. Ignoring the rubric creates ambiguity and allows for too much subjectivity for what should be a structured objective process. How do you feel about the argument? How do you feel about the wordiness of that?
That's perfect, actually.
I like it.
All right, anything from Randy on there?
Not yet, I think it's it's good, yes.
All right. Um so for now, they're just bullets, I'm gonna go back at the end and number them and we'll. Decide what order to put them in, but for the next bullet. On the grant application, applicants must mark whether they are nonprofit or for-profit organization. At the time of application, Spark Newburgh was legally neither. We appreciate that the city council made their award conditional on proving 501(c)(3) status, but a fair grant process would require all applicants have their legal status sorted. Prior to applying. I don't know if that's a particularly strong argument or not, but I remember someone mentioned this.
I think it's important, I think it's also unclear, even after just watching the recording of the hearing um or the meeting today myself. Um it's still unclear if they do have a status at all, I know they've applied for the 501(c)(3), but it I. I don't know if they actually do.
Was the meeting today?
No, I just was watching the video finally for the last three hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's an incredibly important component.
And Leanne, you said we're expecting to hear that. Assessment, no, no, that was the legal review, not the 501(c)(3) status.
Right, at which my understanding is that is a piece of it. Um it was something that was requested to to be looked at um. As part of, I guess, the legal review, I have not heard, I've I've made an inquiry back to the applicant, the point person for this part project. She did not have any further information. Um on that, so.
Okay. Um this one I didn't have a lot of meat for, but um. I remember hearing it, so there were discrepancies between the written application materials and the verbal presentation given to city council. But I didn't have details. While fine tuning of emerging programs is normal and expected, these changes should be worked out prior to a grant application. Should we include this? And if so, I feel like we should name what those discrepancies were. Or maybe at this point, that's not a particularly strong argument.
And I don't recall what those were either, sorry.
I I feel like.
I do have a clarifying question or not. Go ahead, Randy, go ahead, Randy.
Okay, yeah, sorry, um I feel like that's kind of, that's commonplace. Where you know, the written application, there'll be, there'll there'll be um differences, I've seen it often in the planning commission too. A project gets approved or disapproved and they go in front of the city council and they change it during that time, so I don't know how much of an argument that would be yet.
Well, I'm happy to cut, I mean, it needs to be shorter anyway.
Well, I'm not, I'm I don't know if I'm advocating for that, I'm just trying to maybe bring up, I don't, I don't feel real strong one way or the other, but I see if we need to cut. One area that may be the the low hanging fruit for me right now.
Okay, let's highlight and come back to it.
Good, awesome.
All right. This is one that I actually haven't heard other people talking about, but. This was my interpretation of the grant application materials they gave. So the, one of the goals. Of the CET funds is to provide new affordable housing. Which is defined as housing expenses that do not exceed thirty percent of one's income. Yet Spark Newburgh is setting participant fees at market competitive rent payments, that was the language from their application. Targeting participants who make eighty percent or less of AMI, which they are doing. Is only one piece of the puzzle. But the rent must then also be set at thirty percent or less of each participant's income. And the application does not indicate that they will do so. Does anyone have any more information about that? All I saw in their materials was that they were. Limiting eligible uh participants to people who had eighty percent or less of AMI. But then the rent amount, I only found it in one place, it said that it would be market competitive rent payments.
I believe it is, yeah, yeah, oh, so go ahead, Leanne.
I I would just mention that that was, that was staff's assessment as well. Um and that also played a little bit into the discrepancy between what was in their application and what they spoke about at the meeting. They sort of changed the way they described that. Into something called fees, I don't think there was enough information around it to clearly understand. If they were making a change to the structure. Um again, you know, our initial assessment was based on the application. Um but that was, that was staff's assessment as well, um Chair Banks.
That's my assessment as well, um and just watching the video again, um Mayor Ross Sacker specifically did. Answer a question and said that they would comply with no one being over, being let making, making eighty thousand, eighty percent or less of AMI. Said that every app, every bin accepted in the program would be at that level, but then again. There's added fees still put on top of that, so.
Yeah. Well, that was my thing, like, it's totally a good thing to say eighty percent or less AMI to get into the program. But then affordable housing. Affordable housing is a definition that applies to everyone, I mean, if you make two hundred percent of AMI, your affordable housing is still. Expenses that don't exceed thirty percent of your income. So for this to be affordable housing. For people making eighty percent. The rent or the fee or whatever it is has to be thirty percent of that eighty percent. And I never saw anywhere in their application where it meant, where it said that rent would be. Different based on each participant um set to thirty percent or less. I only saw the phrase market competitive rent payment. So that was my big concern there.
Yep.
Any changes to that section?
Not for me.
All right, next bullet, this one's kind of longer, but it's because there's two arguments in one. Eligible applicants are required to demonstrate financial feasibility. Um that was per the rubric, I don't know if that was in the actual. Like the legal documents for the fund itself. But that's true for the rubric. Affordable Housing Commission has not seen a financial plan from Spark Newburgh that proves that the model is financially sustainable. There is deep concern that the project will rely on a percentage of the participants failing out of the program. While a program can certainly be considered successful if less than a hundred percent of its participants complete the program. The program should not rely on any participant's failure for financial sustainability. Furthermore, the Affordable Housing Commission has not seen evidence that Spark Newburgh has secured the additional six million dollars that will need to launch the program. The application materials simply state that they have applied for a federal grant. I don't know if we want to bring up old dirt, but I felt passionate about this. When the Peace Trail Village Transitional Housing Project applied for a city grant a few years ago. The city council was skeptical that they would achieve financial feasibility. And so the grant was awarded with a stipulation that they secure an additional one million dollars of funding. By the end of the year in order to receive the city funding. They did not meet that criteria and thus did not get the city funding. If the city council is going to be consistent and fair, Spark Newburgh should also have to prove that their program has secured enough additional funding. Super wordy, but like. Um the Peace Trail Village, it was like. Does anyone remember? I mean, it was like twenty thousand or fourteen thousand dollars, it was pennies compared to this. But they wanted proof of a million dollars to get that.
Right.
Yeah, I I think, I think you're on to something there.
I just.
A fairness, a transparency, yeah, like, you know, we're talking about a million dollars. And that didn't seem like that was very much talked about um during the council meeting. Um to be honest, that this is the largest amount of money that our city probably will see. Um for affordable housing over the next, you know, so it's the most we've had in many, many years and who knows if we'll ever see this kind of money again. Um so it's a decision that needs to be really thought out. Um for what that means to assist um our community. And when, when there's a organization that does not even, didn't have any money in the bank at the time really of application. You know, this is a major undertaking.
When I wrote this, it was um. You know, there's writing for reading and then there's writing for speaking, this was written for reading and so if you have suggestions to make it easier on the ears. Please let me know.
You know, my my takeaway from this bullet point is is really um with your example, and I know, I know it's it's an emotional one, but it also. Um at that point in time, they did, when they made that decision with the. Set a bit of a precedent. Um but now they're not following that precedent, you know, with what they're doing now, so the example, uh let's see. One of the things that I wanted to try to highlight or articulate in this, in this, asking them to reconsider here is, is really trying to advocate for. Uh accountability and and precedent. Meaning really that. I I I believe that, you know, granting this award when it didn't follow the criteria, you're only opening the door for this to happen again as well. I'm kind of going in two different directions here. I think they set the precedent a year or two. But now they're setting a precedent again. I'm not really sure how to put that into words, but I I just felt like that was something that we need to try to do, to to articulate to them.
Well, what if we put the phrase here, if the city council is going to be consistent and fair? And follow its own precedent? Would that work?
Mm hmm.
And I'm also wondering if this sentence is necessary or if it could just be deleted for shortening sake.
I like that statement, actually. Mm hmm.
I actually think that's a really important part of the statement.
Okay.
I know, we're not helping to really cut this down to shorter.
We we've got a few more bullet points to go, so. Okay. Well, the next bullet point. If the CET fund is going to be used to purchase property, as Spark Newburgh intends to do, the grant requires that a property be identified with either a purchase option or letter of interest from the seller. Um again, that was the rubric requirement, I don't know if that was in the. Fund legal documents. At the time of application, Spark Newburgh had not provided an address of the property they intended to buy or proof that the owner was willing to sell it. Um I don't know if this point has been made previously. Um and if it has, we don't need to reiterate it necessarily, but that was one of the big reasons why. It did not meet the minimum threshold criteria on the rubric. Leanne, when they presented verbally to the council, they still hadn't found a property to purchase, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So I don't. Is it accurate to say the grant requires it or that the rubric required it? So those might be different at this point.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I will um. Give a little insight into that and that the entitled three um where this lives, the Construction Excise Tax Fund. Um there is a bit of a difference, so um under. Three point six zero point zero nine zero C. Um under a use of revenue, uh land acquisition is one of the things that it can be used for. Um I believe the rubric was requesting a refinement, something that um, you know. As you're stating, showed some, some progression with their project and concept and something that. I guess showed um, yeah, progress towards that goal. So there's, there's a bit of a difference between the rubric and um the code section.
So. I mean, we've already made the point that we agreed to the scoring rubric and you guys didn't use it. Um. We know that the fund can be used to buy land, that's totally fine. Um so I don't know if this. This argument is super strong at this point, like. It's part of the rubric, but we've already dealt with the fact that they ignored the rubric. How do you guys feel about this one? Cause this is not technically accurate then.
And certainly I wouldn't want to put something in our statement that they can easily refute and and come back.
Is this one that we can highlight for potential chopping?
Yes, let's highlight it and keep going on.
Okay. Okay. This next one I do feel passionate about. Because the Spark Newburgh organization. Has not yet established legal 501(c)(3) status. Affordable Housing Commission was unable to review their dissolution clause. The CET fund requires that funded projects provide affordable housing for a period of at least sixty years from the date of construction. It is not clear what would happen to Spark Newburgh's assets. If the nonprofit dissolved, if the program failed to launch, or if the program ended before sixty years. Who would receive their financial assets and property assets?
That's a good one.
I don't know if we need this last question, but.
Right.
I could cut this part, but.
But that's important, it really is.
The part I just deleted?
No, 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 the rest of it, that's, that's essential.
Okay. Um and the thing here is like. It's not necessarily a reason to rescind, but it's like. That would be part of our advising. Um. If we looked into it and we didn't think that their dissolution clause. Was suitable for the city's interest, I guess, like that might inform the advice we give. Um however, if, if the city council says, no, we're gonna keep the award as is. I really hope that then the um grant agreement papers stipulate something in here. Um but we're asking them to rescind, not add conditions for if they don't rescind.
Right. And, and I, I think that we're on the right track with respect to that. I'm reading, scanning, trying to. See if I can add or or condense that thought.
Leanne, when uh the city council makes an award. Is it the city staff then who write up the grant agreement?
Right, it's mostly legal and then it'll come to city staff to. Confirm everything in code and what we have on the books for it and then it'll go. Um for the last review to the applicant. To make sure all of their particulars are represented accurately, it ends up making several rounds. Um but it originates with our legal team.
Okay, would the legal team and or city staff? Be able to incorporate something along the lines of. What happens if the program fails to launch or if the program ends before sixty years without city council involvement?
I think that question, I'm I'm hoping that the legal team has. Looked at that and that there would be some, there, I can't speak for them, but I know that they're looking for ways to cover the city. Um, you know, to protect the city um. And leave them less vulnerable, so. That seems like an area that. Makes a lot of sense to try to shore up in this case. Um I certainly think it's. You know, something to look at and um to ask that that be included, I can't. You know, I don't want to speak for legal, but um I think it's perfectly within um the Affordable Housing Commission's purview to. To look at that and ask those questions.
Leanne, where does it then fall um for compliance purposes? Between now and the next sixty years, is that still, does that fall within legal office? Follow up, make sure everything is copacetic, where does that go, or does it just kind of?
I think that's a really, yeah, I think that's a really good question as well, I mean. It will be a grant agreement that's executed um. Between our legal team, the city manager's office, um something that obviously uh community development also has a hand in. I would assume that. Kind of all three of those. Um divisions. Watch it over time, I, it's my understanding that this is the first time the city of Newburgh has awarded CET monies. Um so. Um. I'm assuming, I guess, that it would follow the same pathway that uh grants and other fund monies have taken from the Affordable Housing. Um trust fund. The monies that have been awarded through that. Our finance department may have a hand in that as well, I can try to get more information. Um to find out what that has looked like in the past. For the commission. The sixty years is a long time.
It is a long time.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I move on to the next bullet point? All right. This um, this section could really use some. Wordage help, um this was an argument that. Someone from Habitat for Humanity. someone from Habitat for Humanity actually brought up to me. Uh, cause he was talking with a mortgage lender. Um, so because the model is innovative, there's ambiguity how a participant paying fees to the Spark Newburgh program will translate to applying for a mortgage. Lenders know what rent is and can translate that accordingly, but if Spark Newburgh is using the language of participant fees instead of rent, it is not yet proven if mortgage lenders will cooperate with the intentions of this program. We would like clarity from at least one major mortgage lender that they would accept a history of paying program fees in lieu of a history of paying rent. Additionally, the language of participant over tenant may negate the tenant landlord relationship and participants may not have the typical rights of legal tenants. We would like clarity regarding the legal rights of program participants. Um, so I don't know if I've worded it well here, but my contact was saying that like, when you go to buy a house, if you have a history of paying rent, that's like partially proof that you can then pay for your mortgage. If it's called fees, program fees, not sure if that translates, but um, having just applied for a mortgage myself, I don't remember having to prove rent history. I, I just proved income, so I don't know how I don't, I don't also don't know how strong this argument is, so thoughts on this? Always the first part of this.
Yeah, that's, it's a complicated spider web a little bit, right? Because the, it's kind of twofold there in that you've got the participant fees, the participant fees versus rent language, and then you've got um, really the participant over tenant um description as well, and you write about the legal rights of they would much rather not have um, they don't want to be a landlord. That was said in the, in the meeting. But you are when that happens. You know, if it's, it, so there, the questions like, does that fall under affordable housing? Um, and you know, the definition of what affordable housing is. Um, I, there's just a lot, there's just too many variables and questions still. It's, it's, it yeah, I'm really frustrated after having watched the commission meeting again today. I'm just, I read the council meeting. I'm, I'm frustrated that we have to do this, but we have to do this. It's important. I, I'm not saying that it's not gonna be a good program. It could end up being a great program. It just isn't ready for government funding at this level right now, like you, like with your example that you gave earlier, Casey. I'm sorry, I just need to talk through it for a sec, yeah. And I don't even know if we would have looked at yeah. Go ahead.
Finish your thought again, you can finish your thought.
Yeah, it, it, it this is, the, reading through your stuff, which I thank you very much for putting this together and drafting this for us to review and and go over. I know it takes a lot of time and effort, so thank you. Um, but we would have, we would have looked at this application differently if we'd known that the rubrics was going to be thrown aside, right? Like if, if rubrics is don't matter, then we would have looked at this a little bit differently and we would have given some other detail, like this is the detail we would have given of what was wrong, but since we were going off of the rubrics, we didn't even really like write anything up about it.
We didn't.
And so, and we would have looked at it also from a different lens of of, there's affordable housing and then there's affordable housing to, in order to get a four-year program in order to gain um help with a down payment on a house. You know, like, if we're, if we're going to fund something as a city, you know, are we only looking for people that want to be homeowners? You know, that's the other piece that plays into this, and I feel like are we are we pigeonholing ourselves as a community? To, to say you've got to go through a four-year program. Are we setting people up for success or are we setting people up for failure?
I don't know.
With the greatest amount of money that we, you know?
I don't even know if there's demand for this program, like based on the qualifications, my family would qualify for this program and I would not personally apply for this. Um, because like, one of the, the major arguments is uh, the barrier is a down payment. Well, actually, there's a lot of loans out there where you don't have to have a down payment or like maybe three percent down payment. Um, so I don't know what the demand for this program is, but that's not what I've personally been trying to address right now. Um, I think that could be addressed at a, at a later date. Um, and my hope is that, like my hope is that Spark can have time to address these concerns and then come back with a stronger application, to be honest. That's what I'm hoping. I want to be able to support a project, like we've had multiple good ideas from Newburgh over the past few years and we haven't been able to get any of them across the finish line, and I want one of them to succeed. Um, as long as it's like the right way.
Read.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely. But the way that, that this was approved was a really backdoor way. I mean, why not allocate funds to the Catholic Charities Program then? Um, you know, it's just, it's not, it's not fair. Um, and, and based on they gave us the grading criteria that we used. We didn't choose that. Um, and I also, um, Megan had gone back and watched, that's what I was doing before I jumped on, I lost track of time. Because I was watching it again and I, I did not misunderstand that this isn't an established um program and, and so on and so forth. I just, I, I found it incredibly insulting, um, to be perfectly honest, because we certainly gave it a, a great deal of care and, and thought reviewing each applicant and it simply didn't meet the criteria. Yeah. There's
Yeah.
We can deep dive into that, but it did not meet the criteria. And ethically, the fact that we're deciding to go ahead and allocate this entire fund rather than open up a whole new grant application. Um, it as, as it's redundant, but we, we're setting this horrible precedent and so I think this is incredibly important.
I've since learned that the Catholic Charities Providence Project withdrew their application because they didn't have the rest of the capital that they would need for it. It's like they, they self-recognize that, well, we don't have the rest of the capital, so this grant of a million dollars wouldn't do enough. That was what one person um, involved, but they weren't on the they weren't any of the three contact people listed on the grant.
Correct, yeah. I enquired as well.
Was, is this true? Is this accurate? Um, the grant materials, the written materials spoke about rent language, but then the verbal presentation, it had switched to participant fees?
That's correct.
So what if we said, um, while the written application spoke of rent, the verbal presentation spoke of participant fees? Um, the language of participant over, well, okay, so this this language change may negate the tenant landlord relationship and participants may not have the typical rights. We'd like clarity regarding the legal rights of program participants. Rid of some more words. How's that feel?
Yes.
Okay. Randy, Samantha, anything else on that one?
No, it looks good.
No, that's good.
Okay.
Last bullet point. Due to the extensive list of program requirements, including classes, weekly meetings, unpaid internships, community service, home inspections, and quarterly progress check-ins, the commission is concerned whether the average participant will realistically have time to work a full-time job, care for family, and complete all program requirements for four full years. It is unclear how many hours per week participants are expected to give toward these program requirements. My mind was just like blown at the list of all the required education and mentorship and community meetings and random home inspections and, and all this stuff. Um, yeah.
Well, and again, how, how is setting these barriers, these requirements, how is this meeting affordable housing needs in Newburgh?
I feel like there's two phases of the housing issue. When they live in these twenty units, whether it's apartments or dorms or individual houses, I don't know, when they live there, that is supposed to be affordable housing. Again, we've named that the rent is not thirty percent that, that they've not named that it'll be thirty percent or less, so it's supposed to be affordable. And then the down payment for their permanent home is like the second phase. So those requirements only help the second phase. They're not they're not helping them in the immediate, which is what I think the affordable housing part is.
Right, because oftentimes people who are struggling with affordable housing, they, they're making real choices on what we're paying and what we're not paying, what we're covering and, and what we're not covering in our daily living expenses. So to provide them with affordable housing truly is eh, making sure that, that that rent isn't, or their payment isn't, you know, more than thirty percent. Um, so that they can reach that qualified um, ability to purchase a house if they want to purchase a house or continue renting if, if that's their pathway. Um, so, so much limitations here.
There's nothing wrong with requiring all this stuff. I just think that there's probably a natural connection between more requirements means more dropout rate.
Right. I understand the, the thought process behind it. You know, you have a vested interest in whatever program that you're in. You know, the, the heart and the spirit behind what they likely were trying to achieve, you know, that, that that they're not receiving a, a handout per se. Um, and I've, I've heard a commissioner um, say that exact language, you know, that, um, or a city councillor um, say that very same thing, that they, they want to avoid handout programs. Um, and, and this one, the participants would be actively um would have an active vested interest in the particular program that they're in. Um, but I, I do think that the reality is that you're gonna have a high dropout rate because of it.
Hmm.
Could I suggest that maybe Casey, like, we could throw this into AI and ask it to do bullet, to, to do like a statement, like, and this is like you were saying, this is more the written presentation, but maybe there's a more succinct way of making an actual statement and then this is the details that are, that are kind of spoken, and maybe we add a few other pieces to it as well, if we felt we needed to, if something's missing.
I don't know how to do that personally.
Okay.
And I think we would need to do it like right now, because we don't have time to call another work session after this to review that. But I, I know I can change like some of the language to be more active rather than passive. Um, like, I mean, even just simple things like that. But like um, and then Does that clean it up a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Do we want to go back and review the highlighted?
Yes. Uh, did we figure out if this should be aired or erred?
That is correct. You have it spelled correctly there.
Okay. Okay, so this first yellow section. We kind of did name the discrepancies elsewhere. We just didn't name that, well, we did name the rent versus fees.
Hmm. I think maybe that is, that this section, that that bullet point could be redundant.
I'm totally happy to cut it.
I don't know if somebody else feels strongly.
I don't think that it's necessary.
Let's cut it. And then this one about the property. If we've already made the point about the rubric and the grant legal documents don't say that property has to be identified, um, I don't know that this adds a lot.
Although I would lobby to keep it in. I think, um, I think it's important for us to say what was in the application and what wasn't.
Then we need to change the language of it a little bit, maybe?
We can, we could tweak it.
Okay. Spark Newburgh intends to use the grant to purchase property, but a property has not been yet identified, and this has doubt on the likelihood to launch, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, that's good.
Yeah. I'll read what, so I wrote some notes down and on this particular um, subject, I said, property identification requirement not met, CET guidelines are explicit. If CET funds are to be used, If CET funds are to be used for the purchase of a property, the applicant must identify the property and provide it either a signed or purchase option letter um, of interest from the seller. At the time of the application, Spark Newburgh had not identified a property and had not provided an address and had not submitted any proof that an owner of a potential property was willing to sell. Um, this is the core eligibility requirements designed to ensure funds are tied to a viable, ready-to-launch project. Ignoring this requirement undermines the fairness of the process as other applicants were required to meet it before their proposals could be considered for funding. So. Um, and I'm reading here.
I'm just vomiting words on the page at the moment. Um. Would you re-read, read like the second half of what you just read? There was a phrase in there. Um.
Yeah, so, let's see. At the, are you talking about at the time of the application? Or, um, this is a core eligibility requirement designed to ensure funds are tied to a viable, ready-to-launch project. Ignoring this requirement undermines the fairness of the process as other applicants were required to meet it before their proposals could be considered for funding.
Yes, so viable and ready to launch?
Correct.
Okay. So, I don't know, something something like that, could it?
Yeah, and say in the first sentence, uh, um, you needed between grant and purchase up to intends to use the grant to purchase property.
Yep.
The property's not been yet identified and did not include, yeah.
Um. And Spark did not include proof of seller willingness to sell? Um, what, what's the? Uh, so the
Like, maybe, maybe that's redundant, because, you know, if they have not identified a property, then they wouldn't.
They wouldn't have that.
Seller, there's no seller if there's no property that's been identified, right? Like.
Right, that they, they didn't identify a potential property that was willing to sell or participate.
Right, okay. Okay, is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that was all the yellow. We are down to two pages. This might meet the five-minute mark now. Um, what about the order of the bullet points? What should be first? What should be last? Are there any bullet points that belong together that are separate? I feel like the rubric is probably the, the top one, like that's kind of the how we wound up in this mess when we threw out the rubric.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I, I don't know, do we need to also add something in, in that first bullet point about, you know, it being a million dollars, you know, like, and Newburgh may never see money like this again for, for affordable housing. So it's, you know, just, just saying how important it is. Or maybe that's just understood too.
I don't know. It's not a million dollars anymore. We're down to
Seven fifty.
Seven hundred, seven fifty, something like that. I'm not sure if, um, this is the best second point, or if it should be further down in the list. My philosophy is start strong, end strong, put your weaks up.
Mm-hmm. Right.
It definitely should be at least below the next one. Or maybe it's the couple. Maybe you're right. Maybe it gets kicked down.
Scroll down past the first bullet.
I actually think that that missing status, having it at the second. I mean, I could see, you know, property identification being second and then 501(c)(3).
Well, clarity, um, I haven't looked at the, the, the application. Leanne, did, remind me if, um, they did mark that they were a 501(c)(3) on the application, didn't they?
The box says nonprofit, but they checked it.
They checked it.
They checked it, but then we're not legally registered yet.
Mm-hmm, because I looked it up, yeah.
I think this would be a huge argument if the city council did not put that legal um, that, that condition on it. Um, because the city council did say, okay, they have to prove 501(c)(3) status first. Um, that's the only reason why I think this isn't as strong of an argument, because they already know about it. Like, we can reiterate it and say, eh, fairer process would be to require it beforehand. I'll scroll down a bit. The financial feasibility is one of the big middle section. And then um. This section references the 501(c)(3) status, so should we move that up to the previously mentioned of it?
Ah. Yeah, I think they go hand in hand. They should be together, next to each other at least.
Move that up and see what we think. Um. That gives a, a strong reason for why we're like mentioning it again.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the financial feasibility, property, rent, participant, legal rights. Um. High dropout rate again. And then just a simple reiteration of our requests for these reasons and more. Newburgh Affordable Housing Commission requests that the city council rescind the CET fund award for Spark Newburgh and open another NOFA round. After addressing these concerns, Spark Newburgh would be welcome to reapply. I don't want to give the impression that we're closed off to the program completely. Uh, we know that if there's another NOFA round, that Spark may choose to reapply, um, and other groups may apply as well, and then it would be a competitive. Um. We can't give the impression that Spark would be the only applicant. Um. But to demonstrate that, like, this isn't a hard no, it's a not yet, um, for all of these reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Or we could say, um, you know, our, our final sentence, uh, we encourage Spark Newburgh to address these concerns and then reapply. Something like that.
I like that.
I mean, type that up.
Yeah.
For, just for, for address these concerns and reapply. Okay. I'm gonna pull that up. There we go. Thoughts on where we go from here?
Do we have, um, potential times in which that we can speak to city council? Do we have those, those potential dates?
Uh, this would be in one week from now, on the eighteenth.
Okay.
That's our only, we think that might be our only opportunity, because they are slated to receive an update from legal regarding, um, are they eligible for this? Like, because they were not eligible by the scoring rubric, they asked legal to weigh in whether or not they were eligible according to the fund, dot, founding documents.
Okay.
So it's my intention to get on the public comment list for this agenda item and to speak during that part of their agenda. Okay, so from here, would you all be okay if I made some minor edits that, um, don't change any substance, but just change the, the way, like, the written to how we would hear it better? And to possibly try to condense things just a tiny bit more? I will time it before then, see if it's at that five-minute mark or not. We might be good, but.
Yep.
Sure. Do we, do we also want? I mean, I know these are going to be your comments. Are we also wanting to do, to give this i-in written form to the council before the meeting? Um, like we discussed last time, or do you believe it should just all be during public comment?
Well, when I gave them a written statement previously, just as my own words, I don't actually know what happened to it. It didn't get read out loud, I know that. But I don't know if they read it either. The mayor told me no one read it.
I can throw in the chat, um, what I had written up as well, if, if you'd like that, just as notes. If that will water it down too much and complicate things, I don't, I don't, we're trying to condense it certainly, but just kind of what I had put together and my thoughts on all of this.
Do you have additional points that aren't represented in this letter?
I, I don't think so. I'm, I'm reviewing right now what, what I had written.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't believe so.
Samantha, have you, may I ask if you're submitting written comments? Are you going to sign up to speak as well?
I will have to do that remotely. I will be in Texas. Um, but I plan on getting, getting on. Um, I've, I've designated time to participate remotely.
Mm-hmm. I, Leanne, I don't know if this is allowed. Um, if the plan was to just deliver this verbally, but right before speaking, hand them the written version, just so that they have a copy of it, would they, would they accept that? Like, I, I don't know if I want to send this to them now, like a week in advance.
Yeah. I mean.
But the day of?
I think so. I think it would go like you tried to do last time. I don't know why um, the reporter didn't get it read when it was supposed to be, um. And I brought her attention to that, and then she passed it out, but it was kind of, uh, you know. And I don't think, and everybody was already kind of into their deliberation, so I, you know, I'm glad that you're going to try to make time to be able to speak and um, have that read out loud. But it may be helpful as well to have that for them to refer back to. Um, and I think, you know, we can check with Rachel again to try to just confirm the process for that. Um. And make sure that
Great printed copies the night of. I just, I don't have a good feeling about sending it to them in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's okay.
Someone did that, I can just say, at last, our last meeting, that they brought hard copies of a public comment that they read on someone else's behalf, and it was accepted by all of city council.
Great.
I think you, Lisa, it's precedent of what happened in our last meeting, that you should be able to bring hard copies and pass them out as
Okay. Well, I like that.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Are we at the point where we can take a vote to adopt this statement? Um, and put our, like, commission's name to it, or, um, or individual names, either one?
I think so.
Okay. Do you all have feelings on whether or not it is, um, a statement from the Affordable Housing Commission, or is it a statement from these four members of the Affordable Housing Commission?
I, I just think the four members.
I would agree, because.
Yeah.
We voted.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, we're, we're the ones that are voting on this statement and, and putting it together, so I, I don't want to speak for, for the others.
Okay. So the introduction would introduce myself, and I am um, bringing to you a statement crafted by um, no. Help me out here.
Together by the four of us. Um. Yeah, I think there's a way, what's the way to say that? Yeah, I think there's a way, what's the way to say that, you know, I think it would be supported, supported in, you know. The spirit is supported by all six of the commission, but that four of us have. Were present in the drafting of the statement or something, you know, like, so a way to tighten that up.
Right.
Because they do share, you know, this is, we've all discussed that.
I feel like that's probably true of, is it Brady? Is that his name, Brady? Um, I'm not sure if that would be. Authentic for Judy, she kind of had a ambivalent. Position last time. Sorry, I got a wet dog on me. Does that work? Oh, we're a wet dog.
You can delete the word draft at the top. Leanne, is it possible, like, if I want to sign up to do, to speak as well, like? That I, that she could go first, obviously, and then I would go at another time after her talk?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's my understanding. And if you have, like, other points that we didn't.
That's what I was, yeah, that's what I was hoping for, yep. And obviously just speaking on myself, but just, you know.
Yeah.
I would not say that you guys are all supporting in the same way, but.
Okay.
I would like to do that.
I will be there that night, just in a while.
Okay, okay. If we are presenting this letter, um, just with our four names and each of us have consented to this, do we need a vote on this at this point? Or are we? Good as is? Because at this point, we're not speaking on behalf of the whole commission. Does Faye have any info?
Can you confirm that? My inclination would be to say no, but.
Um, that's a tricky one. Uh, because. You're all in consensus. As it is, but.
We can vote to just make sure.
I was gonna say, we, it wouldn't hurt to do a voice vote, just to make sure, and then we have our bases covered.
Okay, all right. Well, will someone please move the adoption of this statement?
I will, I would like to move to adopt this statement to be read before city council on our behalf.
Thank you, Samantha, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so we can all see each other. All right, all those in favor, please raise a hand or say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? All right, this has been adopted.
Awesome.
I just want to say thank you, Casey, because I know you've put a whole great deal. Um, amount of effort and work into preparing this for us, so that's incredibly helpful.
Thank you, Samantha. Tried to capture as many of our notes from last meeting as possible and. Few things here and there and. And I know we've got some community members who are, um, sharing their thoughts too, and. Um, my hope is that, you know, like, my hope is that we're not just being contrarians, but that. Through the political process, we are coming up with better. Things in the end, you know? Um, I was a competitive debater in high school and like, you, you just debated to win, right? Like, that's what you did, you were there to win. Um, but in the real world, I believe debate and the political process is so that we get to better results in the end, and. That's what I'm hoping for here.
Yep, absolutely.
I think it's also important for us that, you know, by making this statement, we're protect, we're protecting the integrity of the program. You know, I, I, I felt like the, the program got hijacked a little bit on this one, and. So I think it's just important for us to speak up.
All righty, well, thank you all so much for your time. Um, those of you that'll be there, um, next Monday night, I'll see you there, and. Those that won't, our next regularly scheduled meeting is.
October, October.
October, yeah.
In October, and Jerry, if you're available, we'd love to see you at that one. I forget exactly what date it is, but it's on the.
Did you say October first?
It's not October first.
It's at the end of October.
I'm gonna go see if I can find it, so I can block and move my patient's schedule, so I can hopefully be there.
Twenty first or twenty eight?
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight, okay. Okay, all right, well, thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.